September 11th and I'm going to call the meeting of the Resources and Infrastructure Committee meeting to order. We have a forum, we have four of our committee members present, Mr. Derek Williams will be joining us today. I don't have a chairman's report. Do we have any committee member communications? You usually have something, Mr. Webb, do you have something?
Did you want to, are we going to be going over the line report and stuff?
That's part of the agenda, yes.
Okay.
No, that's fine.
Okay, I thought maybe you might have something on the marine sanctuary issue, but okay. Anybody else have anything they wish to say, committee member report? No? Okay, then we're ready for the district engineers' report. Mr. D'Enzo.
Yeah, thank you. Also wanted to say, now this is my last R and I meeting today. I just want to express my gratitude being involved with this committee in the years that I've been here and engaging with the community through the R and I group, working with a great group of people. You know, specifically Karen Dean, we worked a long time, we worked very closely together behind the scenes and a lot of these issues. So yeah, I'm glad for my experience here and taking it with me moving forward. Yeah. As far as this is going to share their engineer's report. I also wanted to say too, you know, I think Jane Green will be taking over for me in my, in my position here. And also Tristan Reaper will also be involved with, with the committee here as well. Great, great guys. I think the district moving forward is going to be in great hands, so.
Thank you.
As far as this is going to hear is a report, I'll touch on a couple of things there if you have any questions on it, of course. I did want to mention a couple of things, the skate park project. The, as it said there, the, the, the complete submittal of the packet that is, is already in the county's review. And the county has requested that, that it go before the N C A C again, and that's going to go before the N C A C on the, on the 20th, September 20th. So that's a Wednesday, and I believe the meeting is at six. It is a public meeting and it's available through Zoom. So if you want to comment about the discussion on the skate park by the North Coast Advisory Committee, I encourage all of you to, to attend that.
Will you be presenting it to the N C A C?
I think Pam Chardini, our planner, the planner that's involved, I will, I'll share a couple of slides of the things that we know.
So it's not, excuse me, it's not here, there's no place to attend it in person, it's all by Zoom?
It's all by Zoom. And also the, the, I know it says here for the community park restroom, but I think the post committee had a question about this. The, I says, it says here that resubmital to address comments is anticipated by August 2023. I did physically walk it into the, the, the county office on August the 16th. So it is in their review as well. So we're also now going to be waiting for their review process. And hopefully when we get back comments, that there will be minimal comments and, and we'll hopefully be able to move forward with the construction after that, that review is done. That, the Stewart Street state, Stewart Street tank project, we are engaging, as it says there, geotechnical and design consultants. We have a couple of people that we think we want to hire. We haven't contracted, you know, the contract isn't signed yet with them, but we have engaged with them, they're familiar with the project. And they're going to help us move forward. And part of it was like what we stated in the past. Is there are new California Building Code guidelines that might require a new foundation if need be? So that's the reason why we needed to engage in a geotechnical. And then also that as far as design consultants are concerned, we also need to get specifications for the new California Building Code. So all of that is, is, like I said, we, we have some consultants that we've engaged and we're, it's just a matter of time and we're going to, um, decide to contract with them. So there are other things here, but does anyone else have any questions on any of, yes?
Go ahead.
Okay, on the community park restroom. Are there water and sewer lines or is there water lines there already for the restroom? Do we have potable and non-potable water available for the restroom?
Yes, all of it is available there.
It is there, okay.
On the Stewart Street tank project, are are we anticipating having to completely demolish and rebuild those tanks or are they, can we reme, are we going to remediate them? What looks like it's going to happen?
No, we, we've been doing a patch up for the last five years on that. So no, the intention is to be a complete rebuild. You know, meaning that take it out and put it in.
Yeah, do some enhancements to the sub bases.
Yes.
Hey, I have one more question. The pilot project for the zero liquid discharge. How soon do you think that will be ready to bring forward?
So the, the last communication I had was, was last month with, with Clark Easter. And he told me that he submitted everything and he's just waiting word now from the Bureau of Reclamation, which is federal agency. So because there are those ones that they were going to get the grant through. But as far as the project, all of that was, was approved, you know. But now it just needs to go final approval with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Okay.
Did we do the pilot test program yet?
No, no, no.
That has to be approved by the.
The board needs to approve the pilot project. So, so the, the.
By when?
Before we start.
Oh, okay. There's no lead time?
There's no lead time, yeah.
It hasn't been brought to the board yet. We're waiting, as he said, for the approval from the Bureau of Reclamation.
See, we can get funding if we wanted to go forward first. Got it.
Anybody have any other questions for Ray? Okay, do we have any members of the public that want to make comment? This would be just on the district engineers' report at the moment. Ms. Dickinson, let me on you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, President Dean. On that last comment. Who was the, is that Mr. Meeks, who's the committee member just made the last comment?
Yes.
Yes.
He asked a question about getting the funding. I, my understanding was that the, the pilot project was not going to cost the district. That was the whole point of using that this particular company is because, so what are we talking about here, funding? Can somebody explain?
I said a funding, if we wanted to go forward with the full project. I don't know that the Department of Reclamation needs to chime in on a pilot test program, right?
Well, yeah, they do, because that's what she just said, it wouldn't come before the board until it had, we get word from the Bureau of Reclamation.
Okay, just a minute, let me.
There's a problem here.
Let me see if I can get Mr., let me see if I can get Mr. D'Enzo to clarify it. Right?
Yeah, I think, I think we're jumping the gun a little bit because the, the pilot project still needs to happen. And, and to answer Ms. Dickinson's question, that is going to be fully funded by this, by a grant through this consultant that's doing the pilot project for us. I think what Mr. Meek was saying is if everything works and if we, and if the board decided to move forward with a full project, then we would seek funding for that, but that's far down the line, so.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, I, I was really confused by that. I think, yeah, that's clear to doubt, maybe for not just me, maybe some other people too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, does anybody else have public comment on the district engineers' report? How do I lower hand here? Right there, thank you. Okay. Okay. Excuse me, I just had a little less than on the laptop. Okay, next on the agenda is public comment on items of interest within the jurisdiction of the Resources and Infrastructure Committee, but not on the agenda today. Does anyone have any comments on items not on the agenda today? Just a second, Ms. Dickinson. Go ahead.
Quick question. I would like to know what is the status of the Dow sewer hookup? It's been months now. What is the status?
Okay. Do you have any idea, Mr. D'Enzo?
The, the project is moving forward. The, there was an issue about will, will they need a CEQA for that project? But they were able to get, they, 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 the Dow people were able to have a discussion with the county. And they didn't need to do a CEQA for that since it's for, it's not a discretionary thing. So, yeah, it's just a matter of them finalizing the paperwork permit. And I have no control over that at all. It's, it's the committee, so. They're just going to let us know when, when they're ready to construct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so we have a couple of written comments that I'll go ahead and read. Regarding Resolution 54-2009 and the community park plan in the parks, recreation and open space area. And this is from Ms. Alita Francis. Any further development of the Cambria Community Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan should go through a constructive process, starting with a community-wide survey, further analysis and a formal process to change the plan that was originally approved in 2009. And as it currently appears on the website, HTTPS, well, you know what the website is. Adding features such as a skate park, disc golf or pool at this point in time will directly violate the Resolution 54-2009 and approved plan of 2009 and is ill-advised. Justifications for doing so, such as the people need this, or it's for the kids, or we have the money, or it's taking too long, are not legitimate legal reasons to violate Resolution 54-2009 and alter the approved plan of 2009 without due process. The site has been allocated to the community at large. The site has not been allocated to smaller subset groups of people with special interests in getting individual projects built on the site that were not on the approved plan of 2009. Further, these interests appear to be competing, which is counterproductive and not based on at-large community needs. This approach is neither transparent, fair, nor a cogent approach to integrate these ad hoc post-approval projects into the recreation complex. If the plan as presented in Resolution 54-2009 no longer meets the needs of the community at large, the plan needs to be formally and officially revised along with Resolution 54-2009. Changes to Resolution 54-2009 and the plan of 2009 should be transparent and done with at-large community input and involvement. Any other approach to getting the recreational complex built is a diagram for trouble and diametrically opposed to the purpose of a community committee or commission, which is to serve the community at large, no more, no less. Regarding timing, the Parthenon, an engineering phenomenon, was built in 10 years by a group of people who spoke many different languages, each with their own units of measures. 14 years in, it is unclear to me why this recreational complex remains unbuilt. I would be interesting, interested in understanding what the obstacles have been, as I do feel this community would, would be well-served by having these improvements sooner than later, if that's what the community at large wants. Further, I would be interested in understanding the overall upfront investment for construction as well as the projected running costs required to maintain the entire recreation complex. I would be interested in understanding the various funding sources. One, where will the initial, initial investment funds come from to subsidize the construction of each element? And if those funds fall short, how would more funds be obtained for the complex as a whole? Two, where will the initial investment funds come from to subsidize constructing of the infrastructure of the complex? And where will the funds come from to maintain the entire complex? If there are any expectations that Cambria property owners will have to contribute to the complex, those property owners should have a say in that funding option. If there are any costs or fees for individuals to participate in any of the features of the complex, that should also be determined and conveyed. An unfinished construction site or derelict, unmaintained recreation area will be a blight on the community. These scenarios typically arise from underfunding. These scenarios should be aggressively avoided. First things first. 14 years have passed since Resolution 54-2009 and the original plan was approved. The questions I have today, are these elements still what the community wants? Are there additional features the community at large would want, such as a state park, disc golf or pool? Were not in the original plan in Resolution 54-2009. As a stakeholder and constituent of this community and a person who has actively participated in community service endeavors for many decades, these are the questions I would want to be able to ask, answer and convey to the community at large. With answers to those questions, adjustments to the original program and design of the plan of 2009 can be reconsidered. Revisions can then be presented to the community at large and a formal approval process can be concluded. The bottom line goal for the recreation complex should be to find out what the at-large community members want today and make it happen as quickly as possible, to the extent investment capital and running cost funding can be made available. This process should not take over a decade because, because the Parthenon. I appreciate your consideration and taking the time to read my comments, and I thank you all for your dedication, commitment and hard work. And she asks this to be read at our meeting, pros, the board meeting, the finance committee meeting and the policy committee meeting. We also have written public comment from Linda Prentice. Hello again. I have owned five lots on Norwich Avenue with water meter number 91 over 10 years. I bought it as my retirement dream. I am now 75. I did not know about the restriction when I bought it. Please, could you open 100 building permits? Thank you for listening, Linda Prentice. She also asked for this to be read at our meeting, pros, the board meeting, the finance committee meeting and the policy committee meeting. And that's. We have no more written public comments. So now we have the consent agenda, which is consideration to approve the August 14th, 2023 regular meeting minutes. So does anybody have any comments, corrections on the minutes from our last meeting? I'm getting worse from reading all of that.
Then I need that we have proven.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Let me take a rolls call though. Mr. Webb? Ms. Amadee?
Hi.
Mr. Seabird?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Hi.
Okay, so that's four eyes and we have one member absent. Okay. So now we're going to read, okay, that's the minutes. I got the wrong paper here. Regular business, we're going to have a discussion at the final ad hoc committee report on brine waste disposal options and approve the recommendations to forward the brine waste disposal ad hoc report to the board. And you have a copy of the report in your agenda packet. And who wants to talk about the report, Mr. Webber, Mr. Seabird?
Yeah. I did have to talk about this, we all participated, I think, along the way and trying to articulate the different disposal options as we understood them. Would you like me to go ahead and summarize some of those?
Sure.
Okay. You know, basically we looked at the operation of an ARO system that's going to produce some kind of brine or concentrate or bad stuff that has to be disposed of. The district has looked at the possibility of trucking the material down to a disposal facility that has an outfall like the one down in Napomo. And it, or looked at, when the case of dispose of getting the liquid out of the brine concentrate. We looked at the possibility of just finally trucking out salt at the end. Get all the available water out, you're just going to have salt and other stuff that's been filtered out to dispose of. The other things we looked at and talked about were it's kind of a frustrating because San Simeon has an outfall that they use. And so one of the, one of the ideas we looked at was trying to combine our outfall need with their outfall experience and be able to utilize it. And that is, I don't know where it stands at the moment, but I think there's still some potential there for either, you could either, could truck a lot closer to San Simeon than you can to Napomo. But the other thing is, if, if there were a way to somehow combine the needs of the two communities and utilize the infrastructure that's already there. That might be a cost savings for both all the way around. That also, there's a lot of things up in the air, like San Simeon has been told they have to move their wastewater treatment plant soon, in the next couple of years. And Cambria's been told that they ought to consider moving theirs in the next 10 years. And so there's thoughts about, well, if, if there were to be a regional project where these two wastewater systems were combined, which would produce extra wastewater to be treated and would provide another source of recycled water for Cambria and San Simeon. I don't know where it stands with the county as far as looking at that, and I don't know where it stands with San Simeon at this point. The oh. The other was, we looked out at the flag lot, which the CCSB owns and has some aging infrastructure in place, both in the ocean and up on the blow. And I guess, you know, one plan was originally to hook up to that and, and punch a, a line out for an outfall. That permit is, it lapsed. I don't know if it expired as a right term, but it's, you'd have to do a fair amount of work to get that permit up and running again. And since that time, that area has become a state marine park and also a reprotected area. So I don't see a lot of, personally, I don't see a lot of promise in that, but. Derek mentions that he worked some on the San City project up in Monterey and noted that their disposal problem, they tried to solve by putting the concentrate or putting the brine discharge under the sand in the new shore. And that seems like something that be interesting to see how that works for them. I, I really don't think that that's going to be an option in front of a, an active steelhead creek. That if you're going to put some kind of pollutant somewhere, that's probably not the place you're going to want to put it. He mentioned, Derek mentioned a couple of other alternatives that were looked at. One was deep well injection. There were a couple of deep wells drilled back in the 60s by, I think it was by Chevron or somebody. They tried, they, they were doing exploration for petrochemicals, I think. But the thought was maybe you could take one of these deep bore holes and use it to dispose of your brine. You'd have to, you'd have to know more about the geology that they can, I think, than we know at the moment. But that was a possibility also. We might call that deep well injection. And then the, the evaporation pond idea that was built. And we went through all the trouble with, on, with, not the article, which was Smith, Stephen Smith, went through that whole lawsuit and everything. So there was an idea that that evaporation pond could be utilized in some sort of systems to help lower the amount of liquid volume and just deal with another concentrated sort of disposal issue, which would be cheaper and easier to accommodate. So as of now, no outfall here in Cambria. There's one up in San Simeon. We talked to the permitting agency at one point about what we'd take to the amount of discharges controlled by permit and would have to be increased if it were to handle discharges from Cambria as well. And so duly noted, we have done nothing, as far as I know, to pursue that, but you know, it's, that's a possibility, so.
Okay. That it?
I can go on and on, but I think we'll just, I think I'll just hold it for now.
Okay.
And there's some questions if there are some.
Do you have any thing to add to the report?
I would just say that all of these were just possibilities. I don't know that very many of them are viable. So you take it for what it is, possibilities.
Okay, I think, Mr. D'Enzo, you, you worked with them a bit on this or on their research. Do you have anything to, to add or comments on anything that they?
No, not, no, no, yeah, like, yeah, like Mr. Stiber says, yeah, a lot of possibilities.
Okay, we have two members of the public wishing to make comment. Did you have any questions?
I did have a couple of questions. So you're, the number nine here of the evaporation pond. So even if used even the Z O D or any kind of evac, would that pond first need to be modified to meet the county's standards?
Well, you know, there's a lot of standards that it needs to be modified to meet. For example, Coastal Commission has a longstanding beef about that pond being built in an Esha area. And really wants to see that pond area returned into, I don't know, rental pools or something, some version of the environment that was there before.
But we still have a permit, does not, Cambria still has a permit to operate it as an emergency water source?
As far as I know, yeah, but.
So it can still function as an emergency water source. But if we wanted to make it a sustainable water source, the pond would not be, would not be usable? Is that what I'm seeing, reading here?
Well, I don't, I don't know.
Because I think even the Z L D would, even though we're to reduce the brine concentration, consider, increase it for the concentration, but reduce the, the mass, you would still need to evaporate it, correct? Is that correct?
In fact, we were talking about putting that pilot system down in the evaporator pond to operate.
Just to be clear, the, the evaporation pond is not going to be used as, even as part of the emergency project. It's not supposed to be used at all, actually. And as a matter of fact, any water that goes in there, you need to pump out. So, and as far as the, and it's too soon to, to make any predictions about what we, what that Z L D product will look like, you know, and, and how we would store it. It's, it's premature to talk about that.
So a lot of these options are pretty much as number one.
Speculative.
Yeah, you need a V E that we can't use. Two, possibly a need app on. The rest is, actually, all of these, we need. The rest is, we, actually, all of these we need to, you need to evap or you need to dry out. In order to even truck it out, is that correct?
Well, they're trucking it out now. Or they didn't pass in a liquid form, but it's very expensive.
Right.
Okay, well, I think pretty much what you, you guys were doing was going over the history of everything that has been looked at.
And try to, try to see if there's any missed opportunities.
Okay, let me go ahead and take a public comment. Ms. Dickinson, I'm gonna unmute you.
Um, thank you, President Dean. Well, gosh, uh, thanks, guys, for the report. But I'm gonna say that over the last several years or even longer. I have gone directly to agencies to get really in-depth information. Um, you know, just kind of coming up with these things and not knowing what these agencies really. Have on the books or don't have on the books doesn't help us much. And so I was in touch recently with the State Lands Commission again. To find out if they'd had any more updates since January eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two in a letter to Mr. D'Anzo. I, I got an, an email this morning, uh, good morning, Tina. This is now the third person at State Lands who's taken over for this. Portion of, of the state. Um, and he said he spoke with Drew Simkin, who was the first contact I had. This morning to get a quick update on the status of the district's application. From when he last worked on it, and unfortunately, we have not had any recent contact from Ray D'Anzo, John Weigold. Or Matthew McElhaney. Those were the three names I asked when I wrote in them. Our last contact, contact was sending an incomplete letter to CCSD in January twenty-two attached. I will continue to review the application and the lease history to move the process along. Should you have any questions, you know, please feel free to send me an email. So um. I already had this letter because I'd put in a, a request for, and a public records request for any and all communication with the district. And State Lands. So uh, this was sent, um, as I said, January eleven, twenty twenty-two. Subject expired general lease, expired. Um, dear Mr. D'Anzo, this letter is a follow-up to our ongoing conversations regarding the expired general lease public agency use. Which expired on October thirteenth, thirty-first, twenty twenty. On October seventeenth, nineteen ninety-five, the California State Lands Commission authorized a general lease. Public agency use to the Cambria Community Services District for the operation and maintenance. Of a two ten-inch diameter intake lines, one ten-inch diameter outfall line. And other pertinent facilities associated with the CCSD desalination facility. At that time, that desal facility from nineteen ninety-five. The CCSD submitted a lease application on March twenty-six, twenty twenty. Based on the information submitted with the application and discussions with CCS staff. It is our understanding that only a fourteen-inch diameter pipeline. Was installed by horizontal directional drilling and that only a portion of the line includes a steel casing. The CCSD has been unable to locate as-built drawings. Which has limited commission staff ability to prepare a land description and fully understand what was constructed. In late twenty twenty, the CCSD used a non-submersible camera. To investigate the internal condition of the pipeline, but was able to only access one hundred and forty feet of the pipeline. Due to the limitations of the camera. In July twenty-one, um, twenty twenty-one. The CCSD conducted a pressurized air test in hopes of locating the terminus of the pipeline. The test resulted in air bubbles escaping from the pipeline along the beach, but not from the ocean as anticipated. To date, the application is incomplete and the following information is needed. One. In the absence of as-built plans, the CCSD must determine the location and length of the pipeline. Including sections that include a steel casing and those that do not. Without knowing where the pipeline is located, commission staff cannot prepare a land description. The CCSD should provide coordinates or a land description. And two. An internal submersible camera inspection is needed to determine the condition of the pipeline. The presence of air bubbling to the surface during the CCSD's pressurized air test. Indicates the pipeline integrity may be compromised. A camera inspection will also help determine whether the pipeline exits the seafloor. If the pipeline is in poor condition. The CCSD must repair or remove the portion of the pipeline within the commission's jurisdiction pursuant to section four, paragraph twelve of the lease. If the district believes the pipeline cannot be removed, it must provide information including a biological assessment and feasibility study. Addressing why the pipeline cannot be removed. Cost of removal is not a valid reason to keep the pipeline in place. Upon receipt and review of the above information, you will be notified if the application is complete. You are encouraged to submit the information listed above at the earliest possible time. In order for us to process your application in a timely manner. And, and then if you have questions, call or email at that address. That was also sent to Mr. Weigold, C C D, and to Mr. Luster at the Coastal Commission. So that's, you know, this is what you find out when you go to the agencies, guys. You find out a lot more. And um sadly, we don't get it from our district uh oftentimes, and that's too bad. But anyway, I hope that helps a little bit. Thank you. Oh, as far as, I, I'm, I won't go on because I've gone over three minutes. That's fine.
Yeah, thank you. Have you gotten a copy of this letter?
I've not, but I was gonna have um, Ms. Dalton email Tina to see if I could get a copy of that, if you don't mind, Tina.
Okay, Tina, did you, did you hear um? Did you hear Mr. McElhaney?
Um, I will send it to the GM and I would ask that the GM please send it to. The R and I committee and the ad hoc committee for their report today, so they will be better informed as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have Crosby and Laura Schwartz. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, President Dean and members of the committee. Uh, first of all, I wanted to thank the committee for continuing consideration of the evaporation ponds. As a potential way of disposing of the R O concentrate. All, all of these options have problems uh that need to be addressed and. And the evaporation pond has its own set of problems. The first one being, can the existing location be used? Or does a new location have to be found? But that's all part of what needs to be analyzed and, and cost estimated. Just to clarify, on the discussion about the existing evaporation pond. The, the season to assist order was issued by the Regional Water Quality Control Board, I believe. And they had two specific items that they wanted addressed before the evaporation pond could be used. And as far as I know, they both could have been rectified and existing location used. The, the Coastal Commission is a different story. They have other issues with that location and. And that would have to be addressed uh before you could continue the use of the existing location. And part of that, part of that uh analysis is, what are the alternatives to using the existing location? Obviously, if there's a better location, then you, you should be using that. So, but all these are fixable and, and they seem to be. Uh, more easily fixable than some of the problems with the other alternatives. So I, I appreciate your continued consideration of. Some sort of evaporation scheme uh, uh, for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, Mr. D'Anzo, I think you said that we are not going to be allowed to use that evaporation pond in the future period, correct?
No.
No, we cannot, okay, um. So do you wanna do any more work on this or are you considering your report complete? Do you wanna wait?
Well, I think it's, I think we should continue to work on it. And I think that uh, as progress is made in uh getting the coastal development permit and the staff. Uh, it's gonna become more clear what we're dealing with, um. You have to remember, some of these options were looked at back when we were doing a full-blown desal plant and we had all kinds of. Issues uh relative to that kind of concentrate. This is basically a recycling water, drinking water kind of system. Which is great because there's a lot less contaminant incident, a lot less stuff that has to be taken out of it. In fact, the water there that they're getting from nine P seven is a wonderful source of water. But again, we have, we have issues about that also. So I think it's worth. Keeping on top of it and kind of seeing what's coming on and uh, it would be great if this uh. If we could see that pilot project succeed and, and document it and uh, become innovators.
Okay, so what we're trying to decide today is whether to forward this report to the Board of Directors. So do you wanna forward it as a draft or do you wanna wait and see what um is sent to our general manager and brought back to the R and I committee as far as that pipeline?
What does our general manager think?
Um, we haven't seen what, what comes of that document. I'm gonna see if there's anything else we need to type out and then.
Okay, you agree, Mr. D'Anzo?
I agree, yeah.
Okay, so let's go ahead and put this on hold. For now and let you continue working on it and, and wait before we forward it to the board, if that's okay with everyone? Okay, okay. I don't know if I need to take a vote, talk to, we're not, since we're not gonna recommend it, sending it to the board. Well, let's do it anyway. You wanna make a motion to uh?
I make a motion that we, we hold off sending this report to the board and. Keep the R and I group working on it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Mr. Seaver, second this. Let's take a roll call, Mr. Webb.
Hi.
Mr. Seaver.
Hi.
Mr. Meeks.
Hi.
Ms. Emada.
Hi.
Okay, we have four eyes and one member. Okay, next on the agenda is a discussion and consideration of a recommendation by the CCSD Board of Directors regarding approval of an agreement. For consultant services with Miller Drilling Company for an upgrade to the San Simeon's well three pump. Um, who's gonna present that, Mr. D'Anzo or?
President Dean, a member of the R and I committee and their public, um, I will present uh. The recommendation for. The repair of a San Simeon well three. So the CCSD draws this water from a couple of different wells, one of which is San Simeon. Well, number three in the San Simeon well field. Um, this summer, staff noticed that the, the pump for that well, it was starting to. Cause a large amount of vibration that was straining the motor, it was making things get hot. Um, and the decision was made to look at replacing. Um, so there were a couple of options for replacing it. One is. And both of which involve pulling out the old pump and replacing it with either submersible. Or, or rebuilding what's already there and putting that back in the ground. Um, as part of that, when the pump has been lifted out, they're gonna do a video inspection. Of the well casing to um determine its uh integrity. Um, as part of that, there are the two estimates, they're in the packet. The uh, the actual going with the submersible pump is actually a little bit cheaper. Um, wasn't clear in this estimate whether on the fifth, the first item. The fifteen stage of that is a brand-new assembly that includes the new motor that would have to be put on top. Or that is just the actual pump. Assembly, uh, it mentions in the staff report that. The motor might have to be rebuilt as part of that. I wasn't clear whether that is.
For the submersible pumps?
For the, for the submersible estimate?
No, the submersible estimate would be a whole new pump system.
They're integral, right? It's an integral, right?
The other, the other option is replacing it with what's, with the life, with what's there right now. Which is a, motor is above ground and it. Transmits a torque via shaft to a series of propellers at the bottom that push the water out of the well. Um, and it's a bearing down at the bottom of that that's failing. Now, so that was taken to be to replace that. But the motor on top was suffering from the, the whole, the whole vibration, the whole system, and so they're gonna have to. Repair that motor and I wasn't sure whether that cost was included in this.
It's not from what I read.
Yeah, so that is a cost in addition to what's on this.
How about recasing the well? Is this of the pipe support?
This is, this is, the well is, if the well's alright, the well casing's alright, this is what the estimate is. This does not include any necessary repairs to the casing itself. The six inches just for. The uh, the water that's being drawn out of the well.
Okay, the discharge pipe.
Correct.
I noticed that they don't specify a brand on the submersible pump.
No, they do not.
And they don't include any of the electrical that would be needed to upgrade to a submersible?
You, you are correct, it looks like.
So that would be an additional cost to this.
Yeah, I was, I'm not sure what the, what the cost of that B F D would be.
Wouldn't be a B F D, there's. With submersible pump, you have different sensors than you would have with a vertical hollow shaft pump. So when they put, if you were to go with that, then they'd have to change some things in the electrical.
My, definitely not included in the cost.
And time, and time to discharge pipe, I guess, above ground? If they're, they're excluding that too. On the submersible. There's some extra costs there.
Your staff report indicates that the attached proposals include a completely new mo- motor and assembly cost.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
When and where on?
It's the next, the last paragraph, the last sentence.
Okay, so I guess it looks like the overhauling the motor is included in that fifteen stage.
Overhauling or replacing?
Yeah, that's my favorite.
It says completely new motor and assembly.
Well, what you gotta read is what's on the quote.
Yeah.
That's right.
Cause that's what they're gonna go on.
Yeah.
Grab a question?
Sure.
Submersible, submersible is more efficient, isn't it?
I was, I believe so.
And if they have some electrical cost, but not. It's definitely gonna say noise.
I believe we had a submersible pump on our well, didn't we?
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay.
It's a better way to go.
Yeah, that's what, that's what they've decided to replace the, the pump in S R four with. Uh, I think it was back in twenty twenty-two, going with a submersible.
Well, I'd like to know what the brand they're, they're, they're picking, just to. To know what the quality is, what they're saying they're gonna install.
Sounds good.
Is there a preferred brand you're looking for? No?
No, not really. I just don't wanna get a cheap Japanese or Chinese brand.
And then what is the new life expectancy on this? Potential submersible pump? Since this last one looks like it was thirty years and we went over ten years on that. We have a rough idea of what it's life expectancy is.
Um.
The new one.
That would have been good information and clarity, but I do not.
I would think that they would last at least as long or longer than a motor that's outside.
It's hard to know now because like with appliances and all of what's going on, what used to go for a long time is like going a. Quarter of what it used to go.
Yeah.
That's the only reason I'm really diving into the question is what could be thirty could now be fifteen, you know, I mean. So I would definitely like that answer.
We should have them spell out all their exclusions on separate line items and. Maybe give us some information on what they're actually quoting on.
Yeah, I'd like to see a cut sheet on the, on the motor and the pump that they're buying.
And then is this vendor a, a preferred vendor? Should, could we competitively bid this or should we? It's not, I mean, it's. I don't think it's a lot of money, but again, I'm, I'm not a well person, so I don't know, but.
Yeah, Miller's been the one that's been doing all of our well work, I believe. Mr. McElhaney, um. We have this on an upcoming um, CCSD board agenda, is it?
October.
Is it October? So do we have time to come back to R and I with all these details that everyone is asking for?
I would think so. What's the status of that well? Like, where are we in terms of how critical this needs to be put forward? Um, you know, I get the feeling that. You would quote, so a lot of times it's cheaper to replace things when it's not an emergency. That's the first thing. Um, that being said, we are coming out of the summertime, demand for water is going down a little bit. Um, that would also, again, a gym question, it's really too bad, you know, we're not able to be here today.
But you think in a month, we can buy ourselves?
We can probably, a month, probably, yeah.
Hey, Ms. Dalton, can you tell me which agenda we, we put this on?
Um, which item is this?
Uh, which item is this?
This is to replace the, uh, the, um, S R, the S S three well.
It's not on an October agenda.
Is it on the twenty-first of this month? I remember seeing it somewhere for Miller's. Okay, so it's not on the agenda yet.
I don't think, you know, I don't, I don't know if this is on the agenda at all. So I think we're finding options for the next R and I and then we'll agenda it and turn that into a general review.
Okay, can you wait a month?
Yeah.
Okay, I think the committee would like to have a little bit more detailed information.
Let's see if the pump can wait a month. Let's see if the pump can wait a month.
Yeah, I know, I know. Well, if the pump can't wait a month, I guess we're calling a special meeting. Okay. Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? I don't see any hands up. Okay, moving on, future agenda items. Does anybody, well, we know we're gonna bring this issue back. Does anyone else have any future agenda items they wish to report? I think we're going to have, um, the ad hoc committee report on water. The next meeting, if everyone's ready.
Water quality or water what?
The long-term water supply and storage. You're on that committee too, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I am.
Okay, and, and I know that, um. Mr. Williams has put a lot of work in on it too and wants to be here for the presentation.
We'll meet again and, and talk about the, the storage options and stuff and, and. Produce some kind of report.
Okay.
And then, and then, and then maybe it'll be carried over to future meetings. I don't know.
Okay, Ms. Dickinson, we're on future agenda items now, if that's what your comment's about. Go ahead.
It is, it's related to what you're discussing. So, um, water storage, um, is that's an ad hoc committee, I, I assume? And, um, I've had like so many people get in touch with me about. The Warren Reservoir that I worked on for a long time and, and, and presented to the community. So people get on the board, they get on ad hoc committees, they, trending committees, they call me or emails. Say, do you still have those, the designs and the data? And I say, yes, they're all in my garage. Ready for you to come and look at. Not a single one has come out and looked at them, so. I don't know, they're still there. If you are interested in, in researching or looking into a, a reservoir. That certainly is what the state is saying, uh, but this town doesn't seem to wanna kind of even address that. But if you want that information, it's available. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Webb is shaking his head, yes?
Sure.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Okay, Jim.
Thanks.
We got an E V app on, we can start there.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other future agenda items, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting and it is two fifty-three. Thank you, everybody.